It is March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, and we will call the March meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I happen to be on a trip this last week and was in a major university city. I won't mention which university it was, but it was in Madison. And some of the students there actually thought St. Patrick became a saint by being able to turn beer green. I had to explain to them that's not exactly the way it works. But one of the things, at the urging to of law enforcement out there is this is one of those days that people tend to get out a lot. Not so much in this part of the state, but other states. Be careful out there. Invite carefully. So we'll call this meeting to order. I would call on Supervisor Brey to come forward for the invocation. And then I would invite the body to please rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We gather together here today to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight, guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve with respect for all. May our personal faiths give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. We pray this in your name, amen.
Please join with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge to the citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if you do attend, motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting by Hamilton, second by Brey. Any discussion on those minutes? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That carries. We have no excuses today. We have no resignations. We have no appointments. We have no reappointments. This brings me to the part of the agenda which allows for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak to any of the issues we have coming forward? I think I see Mr. Dimick with his hand up back there. If you'd like to go to the microphone, Bruce, introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bruce Dimick. I happen to live in the town of Saratoga and very pleased to learn that there will be a resolution presented today, which is basically a resolution against EMR 1417. And let me just give you a little information. Most of you are pretty well aware of what it's all about. I'll just give my rendition of the issue with it. The justification for emergency rule 1417 was that it is a clarification of the NR 150 that had been revised and took effect in April of 2014. EMR 1417 is actually a major rewrite of NR 150. A lot of effort and citizen input was put into NR 150 over a number of years while EMR 1417 was basically done in secret by the WDNR and sprung in public late last summer. EMR specifically further limits public involvement and reduces natural resources board oversight of the WDNR's environmental review process. According to the Midwest Environmental Advocates, it's abuse of the emergency rule-making process. The key issue with the rewrite of NR 150 is that a number of issues and projects coming before the WDNR will be considered minor. For these minor issues, there is no avenue for citizens to request, and the NRB require the WDNR to do a strategic analysis, such as the sighting of a CAVO as an example. And the CAVO is just one example. Since when is the sighting of a CAVO, CAVO, a minor and just to be routine? Apparently, this rule is in effect, but the end date has been extended to March 28th, 2015. The implication being that it will not become permanent until that date. Another key element of EMR 1417 is that the WDNR can ignore local and read town and county ordinances as long as state and federal environmental policies are taken into account. The Eau Claire City/County Health Department has passed a resolution against EMR 1417 and sent it to the governor and other state officials, and I certainly hope that you all will do the same today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Any other public comment today? Okay, I don't see anybody back there. This month, under Analyses and Recognizations, I had Brad Brewin, who did a special guest here today, and had a special guest, State Representative Scott Krueg. Brad, the podium is yours. If you'd like to come forward.
It is my pleasure to present State Representative Scott Krueg with a 2014 Wisconsin Child Support Enforcement Association Legislative Award for an extraordinary commitment to supporting children and families in Wisconsin. During his time as Chair of the Assembly Committee on Children and Families, Representative Krueg worked to strengthen the child support program. Representative Krueg identified making Wisconsin the best state in the nation for child support collections as one of his legislative priorities. Representative Krueg was also instrumental in increasing funding for county child support agencies during the 2013-2015 state budget process. Representative Krueg's willingness to listen and work with local child support agencies across the state to improve the child support program is commendable. He truly understands the mission of the program and has been willing to do whatever is necessary to move the program forward. On behalf of the Wood County Child Support Agency and the Wisconsin Child Support Enforcement Association, I want to thank Representative Krueg for his commitment to strengthening Wisconsin's child support program, which ensures the well-being, economic security, and future success of Wisconsin's children. We look forward to working with Representative Krueg in the future on child support-related legislation. And just as a side note, Representative Krueg got involved with child support program in the budget process very, very early, before anybody else was on board, and was working to try to find ways to provide more funding to the program when it wasn't exactly a priority for others. And his leadership to begin that process certainly helped, and when the state found that there was more money, I think in about May of that year, others started to get in board, but his willingness to start that process was instrumental in for that. We certainly commend him.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And to the Wisconsin County Child Support Association, I appreciate it. Brent, I appreciate it. Chairman Plumm, I appreciate the time this morning. Just as a side note, not only in child support issues, but it's really been one of my legislative priorities to take up county issues and town issues in state legislature. I think it's one of the areas that when we bring priorities and focuses and expertise to the state legislature, a lot of people don't always focus on the county and town priorities. So it's important, as you go through your processes today, as we get those resolutions, we see those, we take those into consideration. So I appreciate all the work you folks do here, and I appreciate the time this morning. So have a great day and a fun meeting. I'll be on my way to Madison.
Thanks again. Thank you, Scott. Congratulations, too. We have no special orders of business today, but we have a somewhat unusual meeting in the fact that we will recess at the end of the packet. We will then reconvene in Marshfield in the Commons area. You wanted to know here, and you probably should have published it, but we will arrive up there, so you don't have to stop. And then on the way, there will be a lunch provided up there. So don't stop on the way. We want to get you up there as quickly as we can so we can move forward with the program, and then eventually a general full county board meeting. That will take us into the packet, which is page 10. For those of you who follow on America, that's page 10, and it's the Executive Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 17th, as well as... Yeah. I've got two sided pages, so you have to bear with me once I go through here. The Executive Committee meeting of... The one that followed the county board meeting, we had two of them on hand, one prior and one following. The 11/27 meeting on page 11. The minutes of the Executive Committee from Tuesday, March 3rd on page 12. 13 on page 14 is the Human Resources Monthly Letter of Comments. Supervisor Clendanny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm really slow. I haven't got it up on my computer. Am I... Well, one of the things is, I see where the Executive Committee, I believe it was the Executive Committee, maybe it was the Seat Committee, but it's where they want to... Carlton Detman is mentioned, and I did not know that we still have Carlton Detman. And one of the things they want to do, and I didn't think this was possible, that a committee could just do that. I thought it was county board, and I don't know how somebody in objection to it could object to it, but that's what I guess I'm doing now. In raising the... For the vacancy in the zoning, to raise it from an eight to a 10, we have a recruiter on board now. It's still very difficult, I guess, to get it. You know, I disagree with that. I disagree with raising these up from an eight to a 10 just so we can get clients. I don't know why we don't do it within and fill in at the bottom. And I just don't know, as a county board supervisor, or unless I bring it up at a committee meeting, if to object to such a thing. I just thought Carlton Detman was over with, and I thought we had our own plan. And this is our own plan. We should not be referring to Carlton Detman.
Try to get a better answer there.
I'll give it my best shot, and it may not satisfy you, Mr. Clendanny, but I'll give my best shot. Yes, we still do the classifications for new positions in the department. We did that for years with the name of the op-ed. I can't remember anymore. I can't remember. I can't remember. We did it for years with a different company. But because of... I believe planning and zoning had gone through a restructure of that position, so it needed... They did different things within that department after the former director left, and they reprioritized stuff with different people. So hence the reason for the reclassification. Those do happen periodically as people leave and regroup with your department and add more responsibility to some areas or whatever. That does happen. So I don't know that it was just because we can't fill that position. The statewide public sector survey, we didn't pay for that. That was given to us. And that's just to compare, to make sure that our plan is still where we need it to be, and our positions and our ranking or where we're paying are still where they need to be, because some positions will accelerate at a higher rate than other positions. I think CNAs is probably one of them that is accelerating a little faster in the open market than what our plan accelerates. So that type of thing is looked at periodically.
We'll continue to try to get you answers, but that didn't answer the question. All right. That was page 12, I think, or 13. Am I going... By the way, I'm working off a paper copy of it in case my pen went down. Am I going at an adequate or proper speed, or is that... Okay. All right. Page 13, more of the same. Page 14 was the monthly letter of comments from the Human Resources Department. I know I have our HR director back here, and, kind of, if you'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new recruiter, why don't you go to the microphones and tell them who that is?
Sure. Thank you very much. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Dawn Henderson, who is our new recruiting coordinator. And Dawn started with us about four weeks ago now and has been making her way around to meet with all of the department heads and learn the organization and the structure and what the needs of the organization are. She's also actively spearheading the implementation of our new online recruiting system, which we plan to have up and running in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Welcome. I was kidding. I saw her, I think, the second week she was here. I came back the second Monday, so I think I worked on her. Page 15, we have maintenance layer of comments. Page 16, from the finance department. Page 17, the systems department report, as well as page 18. Page 19, monthly letter of comments from state human risk management. Comments from the county clerk on page 20. That brings us to the first resolution in the packet, and that is on page 21. And I would ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
This will be Resolution 15-3-1, to end the practice of allowing employees traveling on county business from having the ability to receive three cents above the IRS mileage rate and instead to limit the reimbursement to the IRS mileage rate. Fiscal note, some cost savings, primary savings are in stamp time in not having to process the three cents per mile of compensation.
Heard the reading of the resolution. I have a motion by Clendanny, a second by Brey. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, I got a non-president here right there.
You're fine. I switched you to what you needed to be. You're voting.
I prefer it to confirm.
You in a dead spot again, Bill?
Yes, I am.
There you go. Resolution passed 19-0. Page 22 in your packet, second resolution from the Executive Committee dealing with tax-deeded property.
This will be Resolution 15-3-2, to accept offer of sale of tax-deeded property. Fiscal note, offered amount of $5,000 minus real estate taxes, special charges, publication fees, and abstracting fees for a loss of $1,572.17.
Now, we have two of these on page 23. Does anybody object to us taking those together? Supervisor Clendanny?
May I just have a comment on this?
Oh, will you allow me? Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, one of the things is, you know, there's legislation, and I don't know if we worked on it yet or not, about these special charges being charged to the county and we paying them off. This is a good example of it. If a municipality wants to... For back taxes or for whatever reason, wants to get rid of a piece of property, and of course, the county has to buy it, or this way, it gets turned over to the county, and then all these special charges that the municipality put on them, we end up paying for those. That's why this is at a loss. So there's a good example of why there should be legislation, not for us to be paying special charges to municipalities.
Thank you. Since I do have a motion, does anybody object to bringing the second tax-deed property resolution in? To play your... Go ahead. Take this together.
Okay. We're on page 23, which is item 1-3. This will be numbered Resolution 15-3-3, to accept offer of sale of tax-deeded property. Fiscal note, offered amount of $11,000 minus real estate taxes, special charges, publication fees, abstracting fees for a gain of $2,368.29.
And a motion by Minor to approve those, a second by Hamilton. Is there any discussion on the tax-deeded property resolutions? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Page 24 in your packet, minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee of February 23rd, as well as 25. 26 is minutes of the Veteran's Service Commission. Page 27, board meeting minutes of the Wednesday, January 28th meeting of community care. That's 27, 28, 29. On page 30, there are minutes from February 25th, as well as 31, 2, and 3. Pages 34 through 39, and I'll give you a minute to go through those, are the update from Director Redder and the Human Services Department report. That's 34 through 39. Page 40 begins the monthly report from the Health Department, and those are 40 through 43. That's 40 through 43. Questions there? The Veteran's Service Officers' Report on page 44 and 45. Page 46, the report from Edgewater Haven, and 47. Brings us to page 48 in your packet, which is a resolution from the Health and Human Services Committee and Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be Resolution 15-3-4. This resolution expresses the opposition of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to emergency rule 1417 and changes it makes to Wisconsin Administrative Code NR Chapter 150. Fiscal note, no direct fiscal impact.
Okay. A motion by Wagner and a second by Zurflut. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Please vote. That resolution passed 18 to 21. Page 50 in your packet, minutes of the Wood County Public Safety Committee of February 16, as well as 51, 2, and 3. Page 54 is the Highway Traffic Safety Commission minutes on February 25th. That's 54, 55. Page 56, the Humane Officers' Report. Page 57, Coroner Dara Ham's report. That's hard to get used to saying, because Gary was here for so long. I gotta make sure I look at that always. That's page 57. Various jail reports on pages 58 through 62. Do you have enough to look at any of those? Do you have any questions? Page 63 in your packet, minutes of the Seat Committee from Wednesday, March 4th. That's 63, 4, 5, and 6. The Golden Sands Conservation Development Council minutes, various minutes of theirs beginning on January 22nd, and those run from 67 to 76. 67 to page 76. Any questions on any of those? The reports from our DW Extension offices begin on page 77 for each of those individuals and runs through page 84. I'll give you a minute to go through those. Page 85 begins the report from the Land Conservation Office. That's 85, 86, 87, and 88. The report from Jason Brunberg, planning and zoning in his office on 89, 90, 91, 92, and 93. No questions there. That brings us to the resolution on page 94 from the Seat and Executive Committees.
This will be Resolution 15-3-5, to authorize the county to enter into an agreement with the city of Marshfield, whereby the county would serve as the escrow agent in dispersing $400,000 in business development funds for use within the city's Tax Incremental District Number 5. Fiscal note, there is no direct fiscal impact on the county. The county would benefit in numerous ways with economic development within the county. The county would shoulder some administrative responsibilities in administering escrow funds.
Heard the reading of the resolution. I have a motion by Handler to approve, a second by Nelson. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Supervisor Clendanny, we'll start with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to know that the Judiciary Committee, the committee reviewed this on March night, and we were in the manager's seat in favor of this resolution. Thank you. Supervisor... Who had the next question? Was it Bill? Supervisor Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What committee is this going to go to in a county level? Does it appear that we're going to have some administrative duties with it?
It'll go to Finance Director Mike Martin.
Okay, that's not going to go to a committee?
Well, the executives... Mike, the Seat Committee is going to handle the... With Jason, I believe, is going to handle some of that. But Mike, if you want to address this as to what the workload may be and how that's going to be handled... Or Jason, if you want to line up.
When this was discussed, with the likely... How this is going to evolve, there's not going to be a lot of activity in this account. There is $400,000, but the amounts of disbursements are likely to be fairly significant. So I, when they asked me as far as workload, I said, "Well, as far as just processing the checks based upon approval of some oversight board," I determined that it wasn't going to be much as far as administrative burden on my department.
Okay. And then Jason, you want to talk about the process? And that's why I have been talking a little bit about the committee, because it's surely going to be a fairly minimal...
Originally, the Seat Committee was going to do the oversight and review of the proposals that came through for expenditure of the funds, and we decided to change that. And we have now, we have a committee or an escrow review board that's going to approve the release of funds for promotion in Mill Creek Business Park. That group is going to recruit people, and that's the point, the people that serve on that committee. And I think the intent was that we want the people that might serve on that and possibly might partner somebody else with a financial background. The reason we took it from the Seat Committee and created an escrow review board is to act more quickly. Our concern was that if we had the Seat Committee take care of this, we have to wait for our Seat Committee meeting and follow up with county board action on cases. So by having a separate escrow review board, we feel we can act more quickly to get that promotion money out there, to get businesses in Mill Creek Business Park.
Supervisor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one... Why isn't Marshfield doing it? Why isn't Marshfield taking control? This is their valuing. Yeah, legally, they can't spend any money, I believe, after March, is it 25th?
It's April.
Yeah. Well, anyway, April, yeah, April 1st this year. They legally can't spend any money, make any expenditures, but they can turn that money over to the county, and we can make the expenditures for them.
We become the bank. Supervisor Anderson? Yeah. And as far as the review committee goes, there will be no Marshfield involvement in that review committee either. We have to be totally divorced from the project, and we're giving you the divorce settlement.
Wasn't amicable, as it was.
Yeah, very. So basically, what's going to happen, they're going to have a project that they want to do, and we fully vetted by them, they come to us, you know, we're at fiscal level, basically, and if it's appropriate, allocate those funds to that project. Supervisor Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. Was there a project that was in the works with the Tiff money? Because that's basically what it was, that didn't get done on time, and now we're trying to hold it over. What is this money that wasn't expended for some reason? I'd like to have a story there.
Yeah, if nobody minds, and Jason can probably answer, but I'll call the other Jasons here, too. We have Jason Angel from Marshfield in the back also, so maybe the two, you can kind of tab team and answer this.
Is that this with Jason? Jason, number two. There are no projects that are currently in the works right now that are being held over. The Tiff district, when it was developed, had set aside a certain amount of funds to be used as business incentive dollars to help recruit and attract businesses to this business park. State statute clearly sets a sunset to our Tiff districts as far as expenditure period and also closing the zone. This is a common practice for a municipality to, at the end of an expenditure, if there are still funds that were originally set up for recruitment or incentive dollars, to set them aside in a separate account. However, our Bond Council had said that they would not sign off on it unless there was a separate entity from anywhere in the city that would be the fiscal agent for it. So thereby, we came to Wood County saying, "You have just as much vested interest in seeing the business growth in that business park, and that's why we're asking that of you this evening." Or this morning. As far as potential projects, we do have two projects that have expressed interest. We would like to see those developed this year. One is an existing business within the park that is looking to expand, and another would be a new addition to the park. If both of those came together, and I've shared a development agreement with both Jason and Mike, and I believe Peter has also perhaps taken a look at it as part of their review. Our development agreements out there are typically $100,000 plus. So when we're looking at the type of payments that would come out, if we saw more than four, I would be very amazed. So I do agree with what Mike had said earlier, that this would be minimal activity as far as the number of agreements they would be involved with. Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the board? Certainly invite those, because I have the people here to clarify this. Supervisor Lynch?
Thank you. Just one more question. Page 100, it says that we're going to be the escrow agent, obviously, and it says that we may charge an administrative fee up to 1%. Are we going to charge it, or aren't we?
It depends on how much work it is.
Go ahead, Jason.
Originally, the first draft agreement that we booked that did not allow us to charge any kind of an escrowation fee. any kind of restoration fee. And it was written that way because I expressed to the city of Marshfield that we didn't think we needed to charge any kind of restoration fee. Discussion with court counsel and Mike Martin, we decided that it would be nice to have a little bit of flexibility in there to charge for the costs if they are incurred. For example, if the county board chairman is on that committee, a per diem might be part of that and things like that. Really, we just want to keep it in there as an option. At this point, I don't even know if we'll utilize that option.
Supervisor Anderson.
And again, we agreed with that under the assumption that if there were any costs that the county incurred, we would not expect them to fill them out of their pocket. We expected to keep the county at home on this matter. So it's put there as a failsafe in case there are expenses that aren't anticipated.
That's how you're ready to read it. Supervisor Rose.
I've been kind of contemplating whether to ask this question or not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the skinny of this is, is if we, as a county, were not willing to become the fiscal agent for this money, does the city of Marshfield lose this money? Does it have to go back? And so this is a way for the city of Marshfield not to lose this money that they were originally allocated. Is that true?
Or find another agent, but I think they thought we were probably the responsible party. Go ahead, Jason.
That is correct, in a way, Donna, in that if we did not set up this fund, we would lose the ability to use these dollars through the TIF district to recruit businesses to there. So thereby, the only thing we could do in the TIF district was basically offer land at a discounted price, perhaps a dollar or whatever per acre. Any other business incentives would have to then come from tax base or general levy limits that we would have to work with. So by utilizing this, we're pulling the 400,000 that was budgeted through the TIF district. It still allows that TIF district to cash flow based upon the recent evaluation that we've had done on that.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Any other discussion? All right, with that, please vote.
That resolution passed 19-0. Thank you. Sure, the city of Marshfield, thank you, too. The agreement ran through, that we just brought it out, ran through pages 102, which are some of the nuts and bolts of that agreement. Page 103 in your packet is another resolution from the seat and judicial and legislative committees.
This will be Resolution 15-3-6, oppose SB 21 and ED 21 as it relates to repealing Wisconsin statutes 145.245, Wisconsin Fund Program, that awarded 2.3 million in year 2014 to 654 low-income property owners statewide for replacement of failing subject systems. Fiscal note: Loss of an average of $98,398 annually affecting an average of 41 Wood County households.
Motion by Henkel, a second by Hamilton to approve this resolution. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Please vote. That resolution passed 17 to 2. All right, moving on, in your packet, minutes of the judicial and legislative committee of February 18th, on 104, 105, 106 is an attendance sheet. Page 107, minutes of the same committee of March 9th, and that's 107, 108, 109. The joint legislative committee meeting of December 22nd, on page 110, 111. Just make a quick comment there. They had, there was another meeting of that same body yesterday held at the airport, and again, I want to commend our county and their attendance at that meeting. It's well received, we have a place at the table, and I know that in talking to people there, they respect your opinion. So I'm really glad you made this. Make the effort to get to those meetings. Page, I already got the page of mine, now that was 111. Page 112, letter from court counsel Pete Gassenholz, his monthly reports to the committee. 113, the monthly reports to the judicial and legislative committee from Brent Brilling, our child support director. Yeah, this is great, because I flipped these over, right? They get flipped one way or the other. Pages, you know, 114, and going forward, we have the coordinated services team. It was a PowerPoint presentation, basically presented to several committees, and that goes from basically 114 through 117. Are those showing up the same way on your iPads? Page 118, again, a notice of injury claim. 119 is the same. 120, an invoice. Page 121 is court counsel Gassenholz, again, monthly reports to his committee for March. 122, child support enforcement, support of Brent Brilling again. And then page 123 in your packet, another resolution from the judicial and legislative committee.
This will be Resolution 15-3-7, to go on record opposing the transition from municipal assessments to county-wide assessments at this time as is presented in the state budget. Fiscal note: There would be significant added cost to the county to absorb the responsibility of implementing county-wide assessments as proposed in the budget though.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the resolution and a motion by Clendening, a second by, let's go with, let's go with Mahan. Going, going, going. Supervisor Clendening, do you want to speak to the resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had this through the judicial legislative committee, of course, but we also had members at our meeting, and one of them was a leader from one of the towns, and they was encouraging us to vote for it. So we also, through the towns' association, you know, were encouraged to vote for this proposal.
Thank you. Supervisor Mahoney.
It should be noted, too, and I've only been a town chairman for 20-some years, but this is like a second or third kick at this can that the state government has done to try to do county-wide assessments. They did try it once before, I think it was billiard old assessor, was it Manitowoc County or something? And it was a failure. It was expensive, and it was a nightmare. So I just, you know, the taste of a sour apple is still pretty sour many years later. This is the dumbest idea they've come up with again, so I have a, I have a hard time thinking that'll go anywhere in the state budget process.
Somebody else have their hand up? I'll get back to you, do I promise? Did somebody else have their hand up here? All right, Supervisor Clendening, go ahead.
Yes, some years ago, the town, the state offered, we paid 75% of the cost, and I believe it was Kenosha County did it. And when the money went away, Kenosha County, they couldn't afford it, they couldn't afford it. But if you know what this resolution says at this time, there are some good points and there are some bad points. When assessor certification took place, you only had to pass it by 70%, you know? And now, to get more qualified, say, more intelligent assessor, they raised that. Most, there's very few municipalities that have a local elected assessor. So now it's usually firms going out and it's people that are educated in that, real estate fees. Thank you.
This is the certification of you're not an assessor anymore, are you?
No, my certification, no.
Oh. That was my slam.
Is there, is there any other discussion on this resolution? Any other discussion on the resolution? Please vote. Got a number of them yet that aren't in. Well, if you didn't have any strong feelings, Bill, just don't vote.
I can't even pass this test.
Again, that resolution passed 19-0. Just a side, I had a gentleman last night call me from Marshfield, the city of Marshfield, and he was pretty adamant, kind of screaming at me that we need, we needed to pass this resolution because his taxes were too high. And I said, this really has nothing to do with this resolution. You might want to talk to those people up there. It's kind of ironic that people don't necessarily understand what you're looking at, and it was a pretty long 15 minutes before he took the brat. Anyway, I hope he leaves his phone number for me again, so I can at least explain what the process was. Page 124, we have another resolution from the judicial and legislative committee.
This will be Resolution 15-3-8, to suspend Wood County Board Rule Number 16 and allow as many supervisors who want to attend the Wisconsin Counties Association Annual Conference in September 2015 to attend as are interested in doing so. Fiscal note: Potentially 700, several hundred dollars, depending on how many supervisors attend the conference and how much of the conference they attend.
A motion by Roser, a second by Henkel. Is there discussion on this resolution? Any discussion? Supervisor Zurflue.
Well, I think it's all well and good. I do rise in opposition, only because of the last sentence on the bottom of the resolution. Be it further resolved, that department heads are encouraged to attend the installation of Chairman Plinell, as the WCA president at the budget, at the banquet on September 21st, 2015. I guess maybe if the added cost, I mean, I really kind of somewhat nervous to stand up here and oppose something that's affecting.
I didn't write it.
The county board. But I guess, number one, do the department heads have the money in their budget to attend this banquet? Number two, what is the added cost going to be in, will there be any time lost from work? Those are my concerns. If they could be answered, I'd be glad to vote with you for them.
I don't know the direction, so usually there's no cost in that, you've got, supervisor Clendening. Thank you. I attended a number of these, and I'm going to tell you, I'm very proud of one thing that Lance Premo is going to be the chairman of the Wisconsin Counties Association. I'm also proud of the fact that Wood County is involved in this. It's not very often that counties under 100,000 get this opportunity. And you have to work your way up there, and first vice, second vice, and so on. I just, it's a boost. It's a boost to Wood County to be involved this way, and I think our department heads should know about it.
Supervisor Mahoney.
Yes, Supervisor Zurflue's question is, I mean, if they don't have the money in the budget, then they're not voting. I mean, they'll have to make that decision within their respective budgets. I will say, though, at this county's convention, a lot of times, their professional organizations meet at the same time as well, so there may not be as much additional cost. But it's all within their budget, and they'll have to decide if they want to allocate money towards that or not. And that'll be up to the individual department heads and their oversight committees.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? That resolution passed unanimously. I said, I didn't write this resolution, and obviously, you know, I'm honored to be able to serve in that position. And I said it before, I would not have ever had that opportunity if we did not have a board, even if we disagreed, are fairly cohesive in the actions we take. And that's been recognized around the state, as well as the department heads that we have, who have served as the presidents or heads of the organizations through their particular offices. So it's a result of a whole bunch of good things that we do in this county. Couple months ago, John Hokum, or the outreach director for the Counties Association, came up and made a presentation. During that presentation, he said, I want to thank the board for lending us lands for a couple of years for a service. I think after a couple of years, they're going to be really ready to give me back, and I'm not sure he can take me. So I'm a little concerned, but it does take some time. But I can tell you, the educational process, and as Bill Clendening put out, the ability to sit in on those committees and gather information and come back here is somewhat invaluable. So I'll go to Supervisor Zurflue then, Clendening, or Clendening and Zurflue? You guys decide, you're sitting next to each other.
The chairman and I had a little discussion on this at our meeting this morning. But anyway, I would like to thank Vice Chairman Minor for looking out for the new kid out on the block, because sometimes I don't cross in the crosswalk like I normally should. Thank you, Trent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to let you know, because we're going off the legislative, judicial, on 15th of April, we are having, it's not our regular meeting, but we're having a meeting just to talk about committee appointments and things like that, our supervisors' handbooks and the rules and regulations, we want to get that done. We're either going to be talking about 2016 pre-dians. So just to let you know, it's going to be at 1 o'clock on the 15th of April. In the compact stadium.
Page 125, I think is where we're at. That's the Highway Infrastructure and Recreation Committee, 125, 126, 127, 8, and 9. Current projects update from the Highway Commissioner on 130. Various bid and quote information on 131 and 132, as well as 133. Supervisor Henkel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize that the issue came up after the minutes, but I was wondering what the impact on the county is going to be of having the world water ski event here.
Well, it should be a positive impact.
Yes.
You know, obviously, scheduling has to be worked out with the Parks Department, I see Chad sitting back there. And I'm sure the conversation occurred with him prior to them putting the bid in for that tournament. I've had the opportunity to attend that event a couple of times now, and, you know, you have teams in from China, Australia, Belgium, Canada, France has expressed an interest in it. It's tremendous exposure for our area. It would result in the closure, closure of the beach over there for a couple of days. It's actually in scope of a much smaller tournament than the state tournament, and the reason for that is, the state tournament, you have 25 to 30 teams coming in. This has eight. The spectator base is pretty high, but you really have less impact on the, a couple of infrastructure and the hotel rooms in the city. I don't know if that answers your question at all, or if you want. Okay. So that's the conversation. Supervisor Roser.
When will we know whether we were?
We were selected.
Oh, we were? Oh, okay.
We were just selected, I think that actually came out probably over the weekend, or just Monday, maybe? But it just, just came out. So we will be hosting that in Wood County.
Towne Grand Rapids.
Towne, Towne Grand Rapids. And, you know, just a note, we're, I don't want to move along, because we've got to get up to Marshfield, but those are you who want, Supervisor Clendening, amongst the other things he does, really helps out at those tournaments, and I'm sure he would love any of you to volunteer and help with him at those events. It also looks good around there. Page 135, the office supervisors' report. 136, the directors' report. 137, timber sales. Page 138, minutes of the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Page 139, the same. 140, South Central Library System Board of Trustees, as well as 141 and 142. Page 143, spray irrigation waste ad hoc committee minutes of February 26th, as well as page 144, your attendance sheet on 145. Page 146, the Board of Directors of North Central Community Action Program, that's 146. 147, and 148 is the last resolution.
It is. This will be Resolution 15-3-9, to approve the Wood County Fire Ward list. Fiscal note: No fiscal impact.
Okay, motion by Hamilton, a second by Zurflue to approve that resolution. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right. We also, a voice vote, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then carries. All right, that concludes the first part of the meeting. We will recess here briefly. We'd like everybody to get up there within an hour if they can. That should be doable. Like I said, in the commons area, there will be a lunch provided up there. Are there any questions? We've got plenty of time. Any questions here?
There was a map in your packet, but I also put a colored map on each of your desks so that you know where you're going, what parking lot to park in, what entrance to go in, and where the commons area is.
Just before we go to, Francis Dunn is the chairman of it. Has she got any comments before we go up there? Any further instructions or directions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. No, I just really want to encourage the supervisors to ask good questions and to look. I think that the presentation we had last week told you about the need, and so we certainly appreciate all of you coming up and looking at that need. And just ask good questions. They're willing to answer them, and so whatever you want to know, just please bring up. Again, we appreciate the time you're taking to this.
This is an opportunity for those of you who have not been there, maybe while you're up there, if you're from downtown here, you have toward the Norwood facility, you might want to go over there, the Northwood County Annex Facility. And take a look at that. So we will reconvene up in the commons area at the university, let's say, by 11:30.